Okay, pledge of allegiance led by Pro Tem Marshburn. Are you all right to stand, join me if you will?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, I'm pleased, and fellow council members and ladies and gentlemen, I'm pleased this evening to have, to lead us in our invocation this evening, Reverend Tracy Bell, who is probably well-known to most of you here. In case you didn't know, he is the senior pastor at the New Bethel Christian Church, where he's been serving, I believe, since 2013. And I know Tracy's been pretty active in the community in a lot of ways, and I understand he was a classmate of Mr. Councilmember Singleton. So Reverend Bell, we invite you to come and offer our invocation this time.
Well, let us bow. Look, I'll, we pause to, first of all, say thank you for a place called Garner, North Carolina, a place where about 30,000 of us call home. And we thank you for giving us this land and for these people that make Garner what it has come to be, a place that I believe that you are just as concerned about as DC and New York and California and anywhere else in the world. I thank you for these awesome councilmen that you have given us to lead us, guide, and to make Garner, North Carolina even the better. And now I pray, God, that as, as we try to handle your business, that you will be in the midst, and at the end of the day, I pray that you will be well pleased in all that we do. May we do it as unto you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much for taking time to come out. Okay, next is petitions and comments. That's time on the agenda. If you wish to address the council on anything not on the agenda, you may come and do it now. Write your name and address.
My name is Kimberly Hinton, and I have been a resident for a short time, about 20 years, at 1348 Kane Creek Drive in Garner. Thank you for allowing me to speak during this comment period. I would like to say a few words of support towards Mona Parks, Parks, to finish Mr. John's term. As indicated, I'm sure, in her interview packet, Mona has lived in Garner for over 30 years and has worked in the civic affairs of Garner for over 15 years. Mona loves Garner, as do I, and community service. She is committed to mentoring kids and sponsoring students for scholarships. She has a valued interest in the citizens of Garner, and I'm glad to know she's on board with the Town of Garner's comprehensive plan. I first, I first met her when she ran for a Garner office in 2008 because she introduced herself to me. I have a soft spot for folks who come personally to ask for my support. It makes me think of Mr. Johns, who did the same thing with me and gave me a toothbrush. No one can replace Mr. Johns, who I also met about 2008 and attended his memorial luncheon for his family practically every year since that time meeting him. But I believe the council should consider someone who has the tenacity to run for a political office, a person that is rooted and grounded in Garner, and that has a good rapport with the citizens of Garner. I personally recommend her with high regard that the council consider Mona Parks for Mr. John's replacement. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, adoption of the agenda. Mayor, I move adoption of the agenda, but there is one item. I might need Mr. Rory Lance to help me remember which item we were going to pull for this evening.
Item number two, under new and old business, the playground grant for White Deer Park.
Okay. With, with the recommendation that we pull that item for a later time, I move adoption of the agenda.
Sergeant.
Motion, settle, further discussion. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First is a rezoning, 1901 699 Uman Road.
Presentations.
Somebody have it?
Presentations.
Didn't want to, okay, I'm sorry. Downtown Association Plan of Work, presentations.
I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. I am here to represent the Downtown Garner Association, and we would like to present our 2019 Plan of Work for Downtown Garner. I'd like to go ahead and introduce the Board of Directors. Mary Elizabeth Twitty is serving as our chair this year, representing from Edward Jones. Jehan Hodges is serving as vice chair, who works at Wake Med. Jason Waters with City of Raleigh. Katie Newman with Assist Your List. And Damian Dellinger with the North Carolina Fund. These are our representatives tonight. You'll get to hear from some of them in a moment. One of the things I would like to talk with you a little bit about tonight is the downtown's economic impact. So this slide features information that we submitted to the North Carolina Main Street Center this year, showing the impact that downtown has had economically. So the first column is what's happened in the last fiscal year, and the second column is the cumulative impact of downtown since it joined the Main Street program in 2009. As you can see, obviously, this was a really big year for public investment, the vast majority of that coming from construction of the new recreation center. We're really looking forward to having that open and being a contributing asset to downtown, as I'm sure all of you are as well. That's been a really big chunk out of the total since 2009 of 11.8 million. Kind of a slow year for business creation, but we've had a lot of good study. You know, we haven't had anyone kind of really in or out. We've seen some decent job growth in downtown. Another key factor for this last year was the number of volunteer hours that was contributed, both from our board and from citizens participating in events and on committees. 830 hours of volunteer time were contributed in the last fiscal year for a value of $18,160. That's up almost a third from the previous year, so that's a great sign to me. We've been seeing the volunteer hours contributed number increase year over year during my time in the last four years as the Downtown Development Manager. Just a few of our 2018 accomplishments I wanted to take note of. We had a record fundraising year in 2018. We raised $17,100 to support our events, programming, and public outreach in 2018. Our goal is usually to raise between $10,000 and $15,000, depending on our events budget. We just had a great outpouring of support from the, from the business community last year, and we greatly appreciate it. As you saw at one of our last meetings, we were very instrumental in helping to bring a placemaking mural to downtown. We greatly enjoyed the experience of working with Sean Kurnick to bring that beautiful mural on the side of Full Bloom to downtown. I can't tell you how many notifications I get on my phone every day from Instagram of people tagging us that they've taken pictures. So if anyone asks you where to take a selfie in Garner, point them to Full Bloom. That's, that's the best place I can suggest right now. And finally, I'd just like to note that we were, we received national accreditation in 2019 for the work that was completed in 2018. So what we're going to bring to you tonight is some information about the work plans that each of our Main Street committees is doing. These work plans were developed in December 2018 at our annual work retreat, and then the committees work on fleshing them out further as they start the year. So I'm going to be presenting the Community Engagement Report in place of Mary Elizabeth, who got caught up with dance pictures for her daughter. So our community engagement team is really growing, and we've seen a lot of great things come out of it. Our goal in 2019 is to tell the story of downtown and foster relationships with businesses and stakeholders to continue to strengthen DGA's position as the leading advocate of downtown Garner. This year, we have begun to implement, implement having distinct measurables so that when Main Street asks, we can say that we've met our measurables for a successful year. In 2019, our community engagement measurables are to raise $15,000 in annual sponsorship donations by the beginning of April. We didn't quite hit that. We've had a little bit of a slower year this year, but we've still had a very good showing from the community. We want to visit with every business and stakeholder in downtown Garner at least once by July 31st, and we're going to be looking for two opportunities to give back to the downtown stakeholders, either in time or financial support. Community Engagement 2018 accomplishments include that record fundraising year that I mentioned, sponsoring the 2018 Garner Chamber of Commerce Golf Tournament, where we got to interact with the business community in a fun way, conducting drop-in visits with available Main Street business owners, and participating in several town events, including Extravaganza, and hoping to host the Light Up Main event. Picture you'll notice is the most recent Business Exchange Breakfast that Downtown Garner hosted with, in cooperation with the Lions Club. So that work plan boils down to four major projects that each have a work plan in and of themselves. Our number one project each year is usually to run the annual sponsor drive, obviously because that is what funds a lot of our events and programming for the year. Project two this year is to develop a downtown engagement program that will help us to keep up with stakeholders on a regular basis and to further expand who's involved in that stakeholder pool. So it's not, you know, going beyond just the businesses that are located in the two-block Main Street district to include, you know, churches that are nearby, some of the businesses that are on Garner Road, things like that. We are working on building a strategic social media plan in order to tell the downtown story better, to promote events, and to boost sponsors. And we're looking forward to helping provide support for Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Recreation Center when it, when the grand opening is held, and looking for opportunities to be more engaged with PRCR in the year going forward. So our work ahead in 2019 for this committee is to raise $15,000 to support our events. We're looking to sponsor the annual golf tournament again and invite our Gearworks tenants, which is particularly relevant, as Operation 36 is a golf tech company. We're going to be looking for how we can engage them with the greater business community, conducting regular visits and listening sessions with downtown businesses and stakeholders. I sat in on one today, conducted by one of our committee members. It was fantastic. We're looking to hire a contract social media specialist to execute and enhance that social media strategy in 2019. And as I mentioned, looking for opportunities to work further with PRCR by participating in events and assisting as needed with the grand opening of the REC Center. Now I'm going to hand it over to Jehan Hodges to talk a little bit about what our Event Planning Committee has been, is going to be doing this year.
Hi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what we're going to be doing for 2019 for event planning. Our overall goal this year is to develop a strategic annual event calendar that brings people downtown to eat, shop, and play. Our measurables for the year are that we want to plan nine to 12 events between April and December. We'd like to create one new dog-friendly event, and we'd like to recruit 10 new volunteers to fulfill event manpower needs by the end of the year. Before we keep looking forward for 2019, let's take a step back and look at what we accomplished for 2018. In 2018, we expanded our popular pop-up market to run monthly from April to November. We brought over 9,000 people to downtown to eat, shop, and play at our events. We created consistent branding across events to solidify downtown Garner's brand identity, which the branding looks great, and you've probably seen it with, throughout the, the marketing we have for our pop-up markets and our food truck rodeo, so that really just brings things together, and you can really tell it's a downtown Garner event. We've also provided over 100 hours of volunteer opportunity to our community members. Looking forward to, this year, our projects, our first projects, we would like to continue to plan food truck rodeos, outdoor movies, and pop-up markets. So our first food truck rodeo will be April 7th, then we'll go, our movies will run, we'll have a six-week series from the end of May to about the end of June, and we'll have quarterly pop-up markets. We also want to continue to build a volunteer program to support existing events and plan for future needs. We, our project, our third project is to develop an event-specific marketing plan to feed into the DGA's overall social media plan. And finally, our fourth project is to work with PRCR on adding dog-friendly events. Through feedback that we got from event-goers and community, community members, we've come to realize that there are a large number of people that really love dogs and really want to see a dog-friendly event in downtown Garner, so we are trying to make that happen for them this year. So next Thursday, on March 28th, we'll be hosting a downtown ambassador meet and greet to recruit volunteers for our 2019 events and also for our committees. This will be held at Full Bloom, starting at 6:30. I encourage anyone who wants to come out to come. You can drink and have, get some coffee or beer and have some food and hear about our volunteer opportunities for the year. We're hoping to have a good turnout and really recruit some new volunteers for this year and ongoing events. Then our first food truck rodeo, this will, for the year, will be held on April 7th. It's our third annual Food Stay food truck rodeo. We're really excited about that. Then, starting in, the end of April, we'll start having our quarterly pop-up markets. We're going to have one April 28th, July 28th, September 29th, and we're hoping to possibly add one in December, if we can get that to work out. We, at our events, we're going to start surveying the attendees to start track, like, track some baseline demographics. At our, the annual Main Street Conference that we went to last week, we attended a session that really gave us some good ideas about how to track the attendees and what kind of demographics we want to be looking at. So we came away with some great information from that and hope to put it to, put it to work. We'd also like to explore how other towns have successfully balanced having dogs at town events with ensuring public safety. Obviously, public safety is first, comes first, where we can do that. And then we have...
So I'd like to invite Katie Newman up to present on behalf of the Design and Appearance Committee.
Hello, council. Like Mari mentioned, my name's Katie. My family and I have been proud residents of Garner for almost 13 years now, and I just got involved about a year ago with the Downtown Garner Association, and more specifically, the Design Board. So when we met back in December and created our year plan, we made our goal for 2019 to build a foundation of tools to support and guide the future design efforts in downtown. We realized quickly that a lot of the more secretarial side things, directories of businesses in downtown and things like that weren't in place, and we decided, let's start and get, start this the right way, get these things in place. We're looking forward to having a nice database coming soon that we're working on with Mari of all the businesses, owners, and everything, just so that it's easier to track when someone makes a change. Our measurables for 2019 were to create one new opportunity for public art by the end of the year. Mari mentioned the mural and the big part that that's taken, and we just love what happened with that, and we have lots of great ideas for bringing some more art downtown. So we're hoping to create that one new opportunity this year. And then, like I was mentioning, we would like to create a complete downtown property database by the end of April, just so it's easier to track what's going on when there's a property for sale, like there are ones that pop up, just to be able to have a quick look, you know, I know that house, or oop, I know that building. So that is our main goal. Back in 2018, we accomplished working with United Arts, Parks and Rec, Full Bloom, Sean Kurnick, to bring that mural to Main Street. We're very proud of that. We championed and financially supported the pop-up picket art project again this year. If you remember, they're up during the Christmas at the little pickets that students at Timber Drive got to each paint, and then some also, some of our lovely members from the Senior Center as well. And then we supported Paint on Main for the fourth year in a row, which is the windows that are painted during the holidays, which is also really fun and neat to see with the different artists coming in and painting the really cool things on all the windows. Our projects for this year, our first project is to build and update that cohesive property database I was talking about, just easy access so everybody knows what's going on there. Our second project is to revise the facade grant program. At the very beginning, one of the first slides Mari showed from, I think it was 20, at least 2018, 2017, 2018, those numbers on that column were saying no facade grants. It's there, but because the buildings are already there and established, we are hoping to revise those. We're looking into what other towns offer in their grant programs to just make it more accessible for the current business owners instead of new business coming in, which there just isn't a lot of right now because we have that established downtown space already. Our third project is consulting with the town on streetscape enhancement projects and signage opportunities. This is kind of where I got started involving was just noticing in, in other towns how you kind of know when you're in that downtown area and how nice it would be if the, you know, if there were signs, more than just the wayfinding signs. So we're, we're looking into that and what we can do with that this year. And then our last project is just to support the projects for temporary and permanent public art in downtown. We'd love to get more murals and more creativity and things to look at when people are down there for events. So our work for 2019, continue to recruit volunteers to serve on the committee. We have a meeting next week, and I have two people that are coming for the first time, so I'm very excited about that. Update and improve the Downtown Development Managers' property and business database. Mari had a great start on it. She saved me a lot of time with what she already had in there, so we're just going to go in and make some improvements there and updates. Review those downtown grant programs from other communities to help revise our facade grant program that you guys so kindly offer, and then find a new art project to financially support in 2019 as well. Thank you for your time.
Council members have questions or comments?
Oh, I'm not quite done yet. Sorry. I'm wrapping up. This is the last committee, I promise. Our final committee is our Downtown Development Committee. This is, you know, essentially the economic development arm. Our goal in 2019 is to create a strategic economic development plan that helps to foster growth and sustain our existing business community. This is a committee that we kind of need to do some rebuilding on, so we are looking to recruit three to four volunteers. We've had several people come to the last couple, or the last meeting that we had, so I'm very positive about the future of that committee. And then work with the tenants at Gearworks to develop their mentoring program. In 2018, we began, began exploring the RFP process for transferring the pad adjacent to the REC Center to private developers. We utilized the conceptual drawings that were done for, as part of the Garner Forward Plan, to begin casting vision for future growth. And we worked with town staff to advocate for property acquisition, streetscape improvements that will help to improve public parking and pedestrian access. Couple of projects that we'll be working on this year. One will be to address the need, any needs or opportunities that arise from meetings with downtown businesses. We want to work with the, the Town's Economic Development Director to flesh out programming for Gearworks, so not just the mentoring component for their tenant, but also are there other small business programs that we can offer or partner on, given that we now have that dedicated space and it's, you know, its purpose is to support entrepreneurship. We'll be working on developing some design standards for Main Street facades to help guide building rehab, as well as any new development projects. You know, when developers come in and say, do you have any preferences? It won't be a, it won't be requirements, but more suggestions and guidelines laid out of what we'd like to see. And finally, assist the town to market and develop that pad adjacent to the new REC Center. So our work ahead for the year, explore working with the School of Government on an RFP for the pad. We're working on writing a guide with design suggestions, developing Operation 36's role as a mentor, mentor through their partnership with the town and Gearworks. And finally, preparing economic development-oriented questions to help us gather more data from downtown business owners during their annual visits. So that's it. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share our work plan for 2019. We've got a lot to do, and a lot is already underway, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity, not only to share this, but to have my board come and share it with you as well. We're looking forward to having a few more people come on the board in the next couple of months. You may have noticed, we've only got five right now. We're a five-to-nine-member board, so we've got about four people that are actively pursuing board membership at this time, kind of one of those natural fluctuations of people coming on and going off. But we're really excited about 2019, and we hope to see you at our food truck rodeo, so you can come check out the mural in person if you haven't been down there. But thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Now, council members have questions? I'd like to thank you, Mari, for your, for your very good presentation. The one thing that I think I saw that maybe I'm going to say was lacking is, I hope maybe we and all of us could coordinate together for a, for a big ribbon cutting for our recreation center down there. That's going to happen sometime. We don't know exactly when, but I'm sure we can work out any details to, to make sure your organization is well-represented and, and recognized. I've, I've been in this town for a goodly number of years now, and I've really seen some renewed excitement that's happening down there. So to you and your, and your board, commendations, keep up the good work.
Mr. Mayor? I sincerely appreciate all the hard work that has gone on for the past several years for present members, past board members, you, Mari. I appreciate the town coming on board and catching the vision. Downtown Garner has evolved from something you didn't even notice to a place where all generations find something of interest. The mural on the side of the building is amazing, it's just amazing. Last spring, I took my nine-year-old daughter down and stood her in front of the Angel Wings at Graphic House to take a picture so that we could all dream, and she loved it. She thought that was the most wonderful thing she had done in quite a long while, is to be able to stand there and have that as her backdrop. That's just one of the many things. So thank you all for your hard work.
I too hope we're able to all participate in a ribbon cutting for the REC Center. I just hope it's in this calendar year, so to make your calendar and your work plans.
Question for anybody on staff, including you too, Mari. And you mentioned about the, the pad next to the REC Center. Who's taking the lead? Joe, is, is your department taking the lead in, in development at RFP, or is it Garner, Downtown Garner?
It'll be Downtown Garner, and it's in, in cooperation. John and I have been working together on it. So we'll be using the Downtown Development Committees to sort of serve as a feedback board and a steering committee, but we're pursuing, looking at how to really get that process moving here shortly.
Wondering, are you, I saw you're going to talk to the, the School of Government. Do they have any experience in this?
Yes, they have a very strong pre-development service background, so we've already had some conversations with them about how that could help, and we were, we were very impressed with what they offer. Essentially, what they would do is a lot of, they would be updating a lot of the components of the historic Downtown Garner plan, including like the market research. You know, that plan was done in 2009, so a lot of the research is about 10 years old now. So we need updated market research, and not just for the pad, but for any developer that's looking to come in to understand what's coming forward in Garner, not just downtown, but throughout the town. And so we're looking forward to having, if, if that ends up working out, having them help us do some of the pre-development work that would be encouraging toward, to private developers through the School of Government. They also have connections with developers that, you know, match, match the scale we're looking at. They were also very open to working with us to identify local developers. So I think that's a process that we can make fit that project, and I have all the confidence in the world that they would be a really great fit for us to work with in terms of preparing for the RFP process.
Have you got a timeline for the RFP process?
Not at the moment. I'm hoping that, unfortunately, the best answer I can give you is soon. We have had discussions and gotten a proposal from the Development Finance Initiative, which is through School of Government. John and I have been discussing it, and we'll be looking at... looking at funding for it. So that's kind of the next step. And then, once we determine if there's funding for that, or where that funding comes from, then we'll be able to decide if we can move forward with that, or if we need to pursue other options. But I think this, my Downtown Development Committee is raring to go. They have been raring to go for a while, so they're very excited to hear that the town's now getting ready to do it. I think the main thing will just be finding the expertise that we need to fill in some of the gaps, you know, someone that has more of that market research experience. I think our biggest hurdle, if we don't go with someone to do some of the pre-development services, will be each individual developer has to do a lot of that due diligence. If the town undertakes to do some of the pre-development services and the market research, that will actually serve as sort of an incentive that we can offer to, you know, any developer that wants to come and look at it. I think it may improve our chances of getting a wider array of projects submitted, and a wider array of developers, not just locally, but from around the region.
Expect that RFP to go out this year?
Yeah, I would hope so. We would certainly like to see it go out this year. I just, the only reason I hesitate on that is that, as with everything in downtown, it seems to take a little bit longer than you think it's going to. So, you know, when I started here in 2015, we were opening the REC Center in early 2017, and Full Bloom was opening in six months, and so everything takes about an extra year. And that's not to say this will take an extra year, but we've already been, we've been talking about the RFP for the last two years. So I feel like we're finally at the point where we're ready to put rubber to the road, and that's exciting, both to me and my volunteers, to know that now we've finally gotten to the time, and now it's just a matter of identifying that funding, figuring out how we want to go through the RFP process, and truly getting to work on it.
Thank you.
Y'all have done a good job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Ms. Twinn, did you want to say anything?
I'll be really brief. I'm sorry we were late. We're just, I'm sure that you can just feel the excitement of all the volunteers and everyone on the board. We've got a lot of great things coming to fruition this year that have been worked on for a long, long time, so thanks for your shared excitement and your support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Now the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Okay. Most of you made a second all in favor. Vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Public hearings. Res zoning nineteen oh one, six ninety-nine New Rand Road.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Hepatel, Senior Planner for Transportation and Land Use. I'm here to present the general use-
Let me open the meeting.
Sorry.
Okay.
I'm here to present the general use rezoning for six ninety-nine New Rand Road. The applicant and owner are New Hope Life LLC. The location is six ninety-nine New Rand Road. It is a point eight-one acre tract. We are here today for the public hearing for this rezoning. This project would go to Planning Commission at their next meeting in April, and then would come back to you guys for action in May. As I mentioned, the location is New Rand Road, just south of Preakness Place. The adjacent zoning and land uses are R nine, C one seventy-six, which is the Preakness Place subdivision to the north, R twenty, single-family detached to the south, R nine, C one seventy-six, Preakness Place to the east, and R twenty, single-family detached to the west. Most recent rezonings in this area have all been residential, from R forty to R nine, C one twenty-eight, and R nine to an R nine zone with conditions for the Preakness Place. The existing zoning classification is single-family residential, R twenty, which allows single-family lots of twenty thousand square feet, and the requested zoning classification is still single-family residential at R fifteen, which would allow a single-family lots of at least fifteen thousand square feet. And so I did a contrast, zoning contrast, because a lot of the uses are pretty much the same in R twenty to R fifteen. The major difference really is the lot size. So the zoning change would go from having a lot size of twenty thousand to fifteen thousand as a requirement, a minimum lot width of ninety to eighty feet as a requirement, and the gross density would go up from two-point-one-seven to two-point-nine. And there's some front-side, you know, setback requirements right there as well. In regards to zoning uses, as I mentioned, all of them that are allowed in R twenty, for the most part, are allowed in R fifteen, with the exception of the very last one, which is agriculture and silviculture. So that's the one that would get eliminated under the R fifteen zoning. In regards to the zoning plan consistency with the comp plan, the site has been identified as medium-density residential on the future land use map, which identifies land use categories including single-family duplex, triplex, quadplex, or townhome-style residences with no less than two and a half or more than five units per acre. So as this request, Z nineteen oh one, which seeks to rezone from R twenty to R fifteen, is consistent with the twenty-eighteen Garner Forward Comprehensive Plans Future Land Use designation of medium-density residential, because the two-point-nine falls between the two-point-five and five. The R fifteen zoning district allows, is consistent with the surrounding land uses and zoning, which is R twenty, R nine, and there's some R fifteen further south along New Rand Road as well in this area. And it would allow the opportunity to develop the single-family detached residential at the appropriate density or other supportive community uses. So staff will provide a recommendation at the April fifteenth Planning Commission meeting, and after conducting the public hearing, staff recommends referring this rezoning to Planning Commission for their review at the April meeting. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Your hearing, refer to the Planning Commission. Next is the rezoning of nineteen oh two, Fannie Brown Road.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have another general use rezoning, which is nine zero one three, Fannie Brown Road. The applicant for this one is Bobbitt Design Build, Inc., and the owner is Church Alive, the Assemblies of God, Inc. Location is nine zero one three, Fannie Brown Road. The parcel tract, or question, is twenty-one acres. Again, we're here today for the public hearing. This project would go to Planning Commission at their April meeting and would come back to you for action in May. The site is located along Fannie Brown Road, just east of Fannie Brown Road and south of ten-ten Road. The adjacent zoning and land uses in this area are, this site entirely is surrounded by Wake County zoning, which is Wake County R thirty. Single-family detached are some of the land uses around the area, and the closest town zoning is just north of ten-ten, which is mostly R forty. And that's actually the one case here with the recent rezonings in the area, is the ETJ expansion to R forty around the ten-ten area. The existing zoning classification is residential thirty, Wake County zoning, which is intended to accommodate low-density residential development as either single-family detached or attached dwellings and separate lots. The district also allows some non-residential uses, which are required Board of Adjustment approval or special use permit. The requested zoning classification is single-family residential R twenty, so the R twenty district would allow single-family lots of at least twenty thousand square feet. Here are some of the highlighted uses within the R twenty zoning district. Anything that has SUP in the parentheses would require a special use permit. In regards to zoning plan consistency, the Garner Forward Comp Plan identified this site as medium-density residential as well, which is the two-point-five to five units per acre density. Approval of this request would require an amendment to the twenty-eighteen Garner Forward Comp Plan to re-designate the site from medium-density residential to low-density residential, which would allow for the development of single-family detached at that appropriate density under R twenty. And a lot of the designations north of ten-ten are low-density residential, just to keep that in mind. So this request seeks to rezone the property from Wake County R thirty to R twenty. The requested R twenty district is not consistent with the twenty-eighteen Garner Forward Comp Plan's future land use designation of medium-density residential. However, the requested rezoning is consistent with the surrounding land uses and zoning along Fannie Brown Road in this area, and would allow the opportunity to develop the site, develop single-family detached residential at appropriate density or other supportive community uses. Again, staff will provide a recommendation for this at the April fifteenth Planning Commission meeting, and after conducting the public hearing, staff recommends referring the rezoning to Planning Commission for their April meeting. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, public hearing. Do we, do we know what the plan is for this site? Is it for residential?
Yeah, so our understanding is that this is a property that's owned by a church that's looking to construct a church, but there has been no timeframe identified for when that would happen. So this is coming in front of you before. And I do believe the, someone from the applicant is here, if you want to ask any questions for them.
Not at this stage, probably, but that was my general understanding. Maybe there was a plan to build a church there as opposed to residential. Yeah.
Well, the request is for R twenty. Is that appropriate for a church?
So R twenty uses does allow religious institution as a allowable use, and since this is a general use rezoning, it would be permissible.
I'm not critical of it. It's just educating me.
I think a lot of our religious institutions are either in the R twenty or R forty zoning districts.
Okay, good.
And the reason it's coming forward through the town, it's just now in the ETJ, it has to get to that process to get rezoned-
Yes.
-if they want to construct whatever it may be on the site. We've got to change the zoning from the Wake R thirty to something in the town.
Yes. And I think the petition to annex, which was on the consent agenda for this, which will also come to you at the May as a public hearing, that was said today, is for that reason, because I think they do want to connect to water whenever that happens, whenever the development happens.
This is a housekeeping procedure. Get our affairs in order so people can do business.
Anybody in the audience wants to address this?
Mayor, council. My name, yes, sir. Thank you. My name is Blair Pittman. I'm with Bobbitt Design Build, and we are on, here on behalf of the church, who is the property owner, obviously in support of the rezoning, but generally just opening myself up to any questions you may have, or any concerns you think we should address.
Do you think church has a timeframe for, I assume it does, for when they may try to build there?
Yes, sir. We are actually currently working with them on building, design, and budgeting. The church wanted to be out in front with the annexation and the rezoning to make sure that there weren't any issues that required more time to work through.
So neighborhood anticipating a church being built there?
I'm not sure about that, sir.
Where does the church presently meet?
On four oh one, down towards Fuquay, the old Hilltop Church.
Good luck.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll close this public hearing. Send it to the Planning Commission. Mr. Allen. legislature public funds for right-of-way improvements. Open the public hearing again.
Mayor and town council, it's a pleasure to be before you this evening to present to you the Project Access request for public funding for road improvements. To give you all some stats that you all have heard before, some short, about six, eight months ago, whenever we announced the project in August of 2018, we relayed this information that the Amazon project, then known as Project Access, would invest two hundred million dollars in real and personal property, create fifteen new, fifteen hundred new jobs here in Garner, and generate an estimated new payroll and about forty-five million dollars annually into our community. What, as a part of the agreement and part of the project, there was a request from Amazon to participate in certain infrastructure improvements with the construction of roads, road improvements along the John Sausage Corridor. These improvements would be funded by three parties: North Carolina Department of Transportation, the town of Garner, and then Amazon Hillwood. And you can see the breakdown there, that North Carolina Department of Transportation has committed up to four-point-five million dollars towards the project. We are being asked to formalize our commitment of up to six hundred thousand dollars for the improvements as well, and then any overages that may occur would then be assumed by the developer or tenant, Amazon. Here is a representation of the road improvements that are being proposed from the I forty interchange south to the former Conagra site. And I apologize, they're a little bit harder to see on the screen, but we do have the plans, and we can make those available for those that can't see. But just so everyone knows, what is being proposed is a four-lane divided median road, which is the full cross-section of John Sausage Road. This is not required by the developer, or not, excuse me, not required by our UDO, but rather is being insisted upon by the developer, and they are willing to put in the full cross-section, where otherwise they would only be required to put in half of that. So you can see that the median there would begin just shortly after Martin Branch Road, south of the Speedway Gas Station there on John Sausage, and then would continue down. A full signalized intersection at Calabar Street is being proposed. And moving more southern, down through the, down through the Amazon property, you'll see that the median continues with another signalized intersection past Wilmington to the south of Wilmington, and then on down towards the end of the old Conagra property, the now Amazon property. There would be another median break that would allow left-hand turn movements mainly for their truck traffic and deliveries to come into the property. And then the other piece of this is improvements along, or, excuse me, improvements at the Garner Road-John Sausage Road intersection, which would result in a dedicated right-turn lane on the southern approach, a dedicated through lane, and a dedicated left-turn lane, in hopes to continue to keep the flow of traffic moving there at that intersection. As it relates to the comp plan, as you can see here, this was the graphic that was presented in the twenty-eighteen New Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and through this project, we are able to see the improvements on John Sausage Road into that four-lane divided median road much quicker. Just for frame of reference, this graphic was not created, excuse me, this graphic was created before the project was announced, and we will actually see, you know, quite a bit of this plan actually put in place once this project is complete. So it does help forward the town's mission and forward, and support and congruence with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. In summary, what we are here to do is ask for approval for the expenditures of public funds for up to six hundred thousand dollars for the improvements along John Sausage Road, and these improvements will aid in improving the public health and safety, as well as economic development opportunities, and then around the John Sausage Road corridor. The appropriation is consistent with all North Carolina laws, and so it is our recommendation that we approve this as we, as proposed. And also, we have representative from Hillwood that is here to speak on behalf of Amazon Hillwood for the project.
It's fully anticipated this, this would be completed by or before, or by the time the Amazon officially opens?
That is, that is the intention. And I'm, Scott Martin with Hillwood is probably much more suited to answer a question like that, but certainly he can answer anything you might have for the company.
Question. So when I was reading through this and seeing the headlines and some of the, some of the details, we've been through some informal portions of this before, but it looked like we have covered this before. Is this, this is the first time that this brought to us to formalize- Is this, this is the first time that this brought to us to formalize this, this agreement? But we've had some type of action on having an agreement with DOT and agreeing to their design standards two, three, four months ago, didn't we?
So this, this is a, like, like you said, is a formalization of the agreement, and that is required by law, that notice be given, that the town is engaging in this, and that this essentially will set us up for the contract that will be put in place that would dictate the nature of the relationship between the North Carolina Department of Transportation, the town of Garner, and the user, or the developer.
I'm certainly for it, but when I saw it, I said, we've done something similar to this just not long ago, if I recall, but, so, in approving the expenditure, the local funds, et cetera, that you got on the recommendation, that is, that include, do we need to adopt a separate resolution, that one being 2370?
That is correct, sir. That will be the document, that will be the approval document.
There might be some more questions, Mayor, but I'm moved we approved the expenditure of public funds pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1. The Local Development Act of 1925 is amended to participate in certain improvements to Joan Sausage Road to aid in economic development and enhance public safety, and...
Need to close it.
All right.
Okay, let's have, anybody in the audience want to speak to this? Please come forward, take your name and address, and then we'll get to Buck's motion, if you wait.
Apologize for jumping the gun. Be glad to hear from you.
Good evening, Mayor, and Council members. I'm Scott Martin. I'm with Hillwood. We're the developer. First off, just want to say that the staff has been fantastic to work with here. Very, it's a very complicated project, and they've done a fantastic job. I mean, I wish all development projects went as smooth as, as this one has, so couldn't be happier. And, and just a, in case anybody is curious, a quick update on, on the actual project itself, as I'm sure most of y'all have seen, there's been a lot of activity on the site since, since August. We've nearly dried in the warehouse area. We still have a, a good bit of structure to put up and elevated floors to, to get poured, but we're making great progress. We're still, still on schedule for kind of a shell completion by September of this year, which was our planned end date all along, even, even despite all the weather we've been getting. So it's been going well. And I just, see if y'all had any questions. I know there was an initial question about the, the completion of the roadway project. It's our intention to complete this, you know, before our clients up and running. I mean, it's our hope that we'll be finished by, you know, September 3rd, when we're finishing the shell. DOT's, you know, throwing some, some stuff at us over the past couple of weeks where just, just mostly kind of reporting and, and documenting. So we're trying to make sure that we've got all of our, our boxes checked, so everybody gets reimbursed properly for this.
When do you, well, I was just going to ask you, when, when do you think you'll be fully open and functional?
That's up to the client. You know, it, they've, they've told me I've got to have the, the building done by September 3rd, so that's, that's my goal.
Any other count, Buck?
Yes. Obviously, the, the construction has created a lot of interest simply because of the, of the massiveness of it, but in comparing that to some other construction that we've have going on in town, it's, it's the tortoise and the hare, and I, I hope you win the race.
I hope so, too.
But I, I could never get my wife interested in some of the projects I was working on, and I do not understand to this day why nobody would be interested in visiting a wastewater treatment plant under construction. But I can assure you that no less than once every two weeks, my wife insists that it's time to take a ride down Joan Sausage Road and view the progress, and so we go down one way, turn around at, at the service station, and come back, and it's, it's fun to watch because seeing the amount of activity that's going on at any given time.
Absolutely, it's been an amazing project.
It's been, it, it's really, it's a tourist attraction right now, so later on, it's going to be more of a, a business attraction.
Absolutely.
Can you tell us approximately how many workers are on the site at this time for this phase of the construction?
There's a couple hundred, for sure, out there on a daily basis.
Got a big parking lot that, just to park the workers' cars.
They do, right, right, yeah.
We're excited about seeing that project come to fruition. It's been a long time in the works.
So are we.
Okay, we thank you.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Anyone else? Now, now it's time to speak. Good job. So if Mr. Kennedy's motion is still on the floor, I would second that.
Let me close the public hearing.
Mr. Kennedy's motion.
All righty. We'll try it one more time. Move to approve the expenditure of public funds pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1, that being the Local Development Act of 1925, as amended to participate in certain improvements to Joan Sausage Road to aid in economic development and enhance public safety, and move also to adopt Resolution Number 2019-2370 relating to the motion that was just offered.
Okay.
Further discussion? Hall in favor vote, say aye.
Aye.
Hall opposed? Take a figure.
And Mayor Williams, before we move away from public hearings, can we just double-check on item number one under public hearings to see if there was any public comment from the audience and the attendees that were here in relation to the rezoning on New Rand Road, 699?
State that, Rodney, we'll give them time if they want to make comments. Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Thanks.
Andy, you're in all business, are we?
Yes.
Yes, we are. Mr. Bill Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, the next item here is two contracts in the agenda. It's called Developer Agreements for Joan Sausage Road Improvements, on page 50. These two contracts here are what you just voted the power to spend money on. Now we get to the, the details, and the two contracts that are put before you here are a contract between North Carolina Department of Transportation and the town of Garner, which is in the form of a new, fairly new way that DOT is going about participating in some, some highway construction projects. It's called Locally Administered Funding Project. Basically, by this contract, NC DOT agrees to pay up to $4.5 million toward this, this Joan Sausage Road improvement that you just heard Joe talking about. And it sets forth in sort of typical DOT fashion, all kinds of bells and whistles and references to, to manuals and contract standards and so forth, saying how DOT likes a road to be built. The contract provides that when it's said and done, DOT will put up that amount of money. The way we're going to bring that about is for the town to assign its rights to recover money from DOT and its obligations to build this road, to assign those to Hillwood, which is the construction company, which is engaged in, in doing the, the work and is going to proceed on the road once we get these contracts signed. The way this will work is that Hillwood will do the work that you've just seen outlined, and if it goes over the 5.1 million, Hillwood is responsible for everything that occurs above that. The town will put up, if it comes in under, if it comes in under 45, 4, 4 and 1/2 million or, or 5 million or whatever, the town is only obligated to put its money in to the extent that DOT's 4 and 1/2 million plus whatever's needed if it comes in under the 5 million one. Town only puts up to 600, doesn't guarantee that it'll put up 600. The town will make its funds available to the extent that it is needed in this project for things including some utility relocation, right-of-way acquisition, and, and some roadway expenses if in fact it's called upon to do that. The process that we've gone through in this contract, and the reason Councilman Kennedy thinks we've, we've heard it before, it's, it's been going on for, for months in terms of being at a staff level, and we've mentioned it to council a few times. The way this project started out is back in, in the, you know, fall of the year, DOT presented us with its proposal for how it would want this project to be done, and we had some input back with DOT clarifying a few things and talking about a few things. And finally, DOT made its final review and said, all right, town, here's the contract that we're willing to, to enter, to enter into with you. Now, you go talk to Hillwood and negotiate a contract with Hillwood in which Hillwood will agree to all the bells and whistles that, that NC DOT wants. And so we went into process with Hillwood, and we've gone through a few back and forth to clarify a number of things, and then we turned all that back over to DOT to approve our contract with Hillwood, so that everybody's on the same page, everybody's trying to, trying to work on this as a, a group project. And then a couple of weeks ago, we had a series of telephone conference meetings that involved DOT personnel and Hillwood personnel and the engineering people for Hillwood and, and town staff, and then there've been a number of follow-up conversations among different parties since then, making sure that Hillwood, as the contractor, understands DOT's expectations and that its engineers are familiar with all the DOT standards and requirements and things that they have to do to jump through the hoops to, to get into this funding. And so finally, we're at the point of, I believe, putting this in front of the council, and if you have any questions about it, be glad to try to get into them. If the council approves the execution of these contracts, what we'll do at this point is DOT will, will sign the contract with the town, town will sign the contract with DOT, town will sign the contract with Hillwood and vice versa, and then DOT will sign off on the contract with Hillwood. So everybody's in sync, these two things go absolutely together, and they're intermixed, you can't have one without the other. If, if anybody has any specific questions, I'll try to, try to dig into them, but that's kind of the general view.
The scope of the work, Joe, is the, the northern part in front of, in front of Amazon, and then the southern part for improving the, the, the southern end down at the intersection of Garner Road?
Yes, sir. So the, I apologize, I took...
No, that's okay. So it's both pieces?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It'll include the improvements from the interchange there, 40, as soon as it becomes Garner, over the bridge, all the way to the southern end of the property, of the, of the former Conagra site. There'll be no improvements made from the southern end of the property, but they'll pick back up at the Garner Road interchange to include that right, that dedicated right-hand turn onto Garner Road.
Got you.
I believe it. Is that...
I was...
Make sure I didn't miss anything.
Just clarification.
What we need, Mr. Anderson, is to authorize the manager to execute the agreements with Hillwood and North Carolina DOT. We're in contract at the time, or just doing both at the same time? There's two, I mean...
One motion can cover both of them, and they, they, you can't, you can't have one without the other.
All right. And I move that we authorize the town manager to execute the agreements with Hillwood and North Carolina DOT, with stated improvements along Joan Sausage Road as presented by Mr. Stallings for the Amazon project, and the work to be completed by Hillwood to, to North Carolina DOT standards.
I will second that. I wanted to just ask one question, I don't want to get in the weeds on this, but we all know that's a very heavily traveled road out there. As this construction is underway, is there any special provisions being made as to how people will transit that area out there, or they'll just have to work, work their way through?
If you'll allow, I think Scott is much better equipped to answer that question.
Okay, yeah. I think a lot of people would be curious to know how we might do that as best we can without clogging things up.
Yes, yeah. And part of our permit with the DOT is, is kind of a phasing plan on how, how we're going to make it all work. Essentially, on the, I guess it'd be the, the west side of the property, on the other side of the street from, from our development, that'll be the first phase. We'll, we'll put in the new lane on that side of the road, and then we'll jump back to our side of the road to, to complete that. But essentially, the way it's drawn up is that at all times during peak hours, two lanes will be always open on Joan Sausage. At times, obviously, there'll be flaggers and, and all safety requirements kind of working together, but it'll, it'll be probably reduced down to one lane at intermittent times, but it wouldn't be anything that would be a big detriment to traffic, would they try to do it in, in off-peak hours?
Okay, good, good to know. That's a challenging area.
And in the midst of this construction time, I believe school will be closed, so that'll be a plus also. The school will be closed.
And we'll work, I know our, Rick Mercer, our public information officer is here, and we'll make sure to coordinate between Hillwood, DOT, and Rick's office to try to provide as much public notice and information about road closures and lane shifts and things like that, so that the public is aware of what's going on, and hopefully will avoid any unnecessary surprises as they traverse Joan Sausage Road.
Good, thank you. Okay, we've got a motion, a second, execute.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, because I could ask you to make one slight modification. The contract with Hillwood is drawn up to be signed by the mayor, so if you'd say mayor or manager to sign these contracts.
Authorize the town manager and/or the mayor to execute the agreement with Hillwood.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion, a second. Further discussion? Hall in favor vote, I say aye.
Aye.
Hall opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, can I take just a brief moment and ask one of, either Mr. Dixon or Mr. Hodges, Mr. Royal, someone, I know people are here or watched on TV or Facebook or going to watch this online or whatever and say, what the heck are you doing with the other part of Joan Sausage Road, from where this ends to Garner Road? Can one of y'all address that we have authorized staff to move forward with a firm...
Yeah, with the firm, a plan to look at that.
Yeah, the plan to go ahead and try to do the rest of it, and then also the conceptual plan to, to one day take Joan Sausage out to Highway 70, either over or under the railroad.
Right, right.
Can you bring attention to that, that we've authorized that to get that, that second part, that second phase rolling?
So as typical, a developer is going to make improvements in front of their property from property line to property line, so, so, and then we just mentioned that there's going to be some improvements at the intersection of Garner Road and Joan Sausage Road, so that leaves the middle sections in between the two, and so like Mr. Singleton was saying, people may be wondering what, what happened with that, but the town's going to look at and have engineer kind of study how that could be improved in the future. And then in addition to that, we're looking at doing a conceptual plan that will straighten Joan Sausage Road from the Garner Road intersection over to 70. At some point, that's going to require a, a grade separation from the railroad, more than likely, of maybe a tunnel, because it would, it would take too much room to try to do a flyover, but maybe a tunnel. And so we're having a consultant look at the alignment of the road and how it would come out at Highway 70, and setting that intersection, because that could have some implications for some other future development in the area, so we want to make sure we have a, a good indication of where that, where that intersection might come out on 70, and, and then kind of look at, you know, how we can further continue Joan Sausage Road, the lanes, the whole four-lane section at some point, and make a connection. John, you, anything you want to add to that?
I would only add that the council will get a little bit more of a particular schedule when we meet at the work session this month, because we are bringing back in coordination with several other questions council had. We'll be bringing out, back the schedule for how we could do that work, and, and how some of the potential funding sources that we might apply for would play in that. So council will get an additional update at the work session next week on timeline for the work that Mr. Dickerson was just talking about.
But we just want to let people know that we have authorized staff to go ahead and move forward with a, a consultant design for them to look at actually designing that one, the second part of Joan Sausage to Garner Road, the actual construction of, of doing that. The other part, once we go to and through Garner Road, will be a conceptual study of how to continue to straighten Highway 70, and how to plant a money tree so we can figure out how to pay for that part. But the first part, we've, as Mr. Hodges noted, we, you know, can work on, on some grants and participating in that funding, going either over or under the railroad... Going either over or under the railroad is a substantially higher cost. We'll just have to cross that bridge when we get to it, or go under the railroad when we get to it. Thank y'all for mentioning that, and I know people are going to ask, "Okay, you're going to widen this, it's going to be finished sometime later this year, when are we going to do the rest of Jones Sausage?" So, at least it lets people know that the process is started.
Okay, bud.
If I might add on from a, more of a, not regarding DOT or this particular project, but since Mr. Stallings had been up here before, if you could come back up just for one more second, Joe. I'd like to apologize for an oversight that I made earlier this month, and to recognize, Joe, for making his acting debut on the play duty at the Performing Arts Center. I did not recognize him, and I was too busy talking to somebody and hadn't read the playbill, and then determined that he had participated in the program, and was that, in fact, your acting debut?
That was. I believe the Oscar's in the mail.
It was, people enjoyed that, it was a good way. Tim Stevens does a real service for the town, and particularly to recognize those men and women that served in Vietnam, and particularly to those who's paid the ultimate price for their service, but thank you for your participation, Joe. Thank you.
Okay, as I understand it, I think Gray made his last motion, and didn't get a second, so it's-
No, Mr. Marsh, and we thought we approved it.
He was first, yeah.
Yes, sir. We're ready to go. Item has been not delayed, or pulled.
Item three, right. So, we're at number three, you have one with me?
Making progress.
Funding options for future park acquisition. Matt?
All right, thank you very much. Joel, I'm sure you remember, a couple of months ago, you indicated your intent to purchase a piece of property on East Garner Road, about 72 and a half acres to be used for future park, and we are still going through the due diligence and the acquisition process, and are on track to close sometime in April is our current estimate. At the time, we identified that there was sufficient funding available to purchase the property, but we need to circle back and specify exactly which source of funds we'll use for that purchase, and so that's what we'd like your feedback on today. The total estimated acquisition cost, including the price of the property, all the related transaction fees, due diligence costs, closing costs, that kind of thing, is about $2.4 million. The staff reviewed a number of potential funding sources for the property, and narrowed it down to two that seem the most likely. One is the fee-in lieu of parkland funds, which we collect as part of our development process, and those funds are specifically restricted and earmarked for things like purchasing parkland and developing park property, you know, new parks that can go to support the new residents that are coming to the town. You know, a purchase like this seems to fit pretty squarely in that revenue category, so that seems like a good option. And then, the other one is fund balance. There's not enough money in the fee-in lieu category to fully fund the acquisition that way, even if we wanted to, although you could also say that there might be some reason to hold a little bit of that money back so that it could be used on other park development or acquisition opportunities in other parts of town and in the future. But, in any event, we need to come up with some mix of fee-in lieu funding and fund balance to pay for the $2.4 million acquisition costs. From the staff perspective, there are really a variety of different mixes that could work. We've suggested a 50/50 mix, just because that accomplishes the goal of using a significant amount of the fee-in lieu funding, but still leaving some of that still available, and then it's also just a sort of a simple, you know, logical way to split it, but it would be perfectly acceptable to choose a different ratio or a different mix if that's your desire. So, there's $1.9 million available in fee-in lieu, and the uncommitted fund balance total is $17.7 million, but just as a reminder, we have the policy that specifies 30% of our annual operating budget would be held in reserve, and so the amount of that $17.7 million that's available, once you factor in the 30% policy, is about $7.8 million. So, those are the total amounts of money in each of those sources, and with that, I just would look for your feedback about which source of funds you'd like to use.
And you need to leave here tonight with that figure out.
We need to know tonight what the split is going to be, and then, Ms. Worthing, we'll come back later with a budget amendment to formalize that, but we couldn't have that ready for tonight because we didn't necessarily know exactly what decision to make on how much funding. So, yeah, we do need a final answer on what the split should be.
Mr. Mayor, to get to the issue before, so I'm going to move that we accept the staff's recommendation for funding of this project by taking $1.2 million out of the fee-in lieu fund, and also $1.2 million out of our fund balance.
Second.
Motion made a second, further discussion. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Got a question.
Question.
Rodney, has the budget looking, budget revenues looking, and would we expect to get any replenishment in fund balance as a result of this year's budget?
That's one thing we're looking at. We plan to do a third-quarter review report for you next week, and that'll give you a better indication of what excess revenues there might be in this year's expenditures. We also, I think we did get maybe a small amount of fee-in lieu of recently, so we'll put a little bit more in there. Budget revenues, you know, not looking as good as we had hoped it would be, but, you know, we'll do what we can with what we have. There's several things with the additional revenue that, you know, we're going to have to commit to already, like, you know, increased election costs, we don't really have many choices in that, and then some of the other things that we've committed to, but it's, you know, it's a slower growth year than anticipated as far as revenue. Overall.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Johnson, Town Engineer. Item we've got before you is related to the 2019 stormwater projects. As you may remember, this follows a stormwater study that was completed by the town a year or two ago, and identified several capital stormwater projects that were in need, and back in September of last year, the town put together a request for qualifications that went out. Town received 10 proposals, and staff reviewed the proposals with a review panel, and has identified McAdams Company to perform this work. Following that, staff went, prepared a scope of work, and has worked with McAdams for fee, and the total fee for that is the $156,500, and staff is looking for the town to authorize the manager to execute that design agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments?
Let me get down to the contract. One of them, it would be right down your alley, Chris, there was one of the provisions under assumptions, is that any coordination for water and sewer utilities will be completed through the city of Raleigh Public Utilities, and I don't know how we can, that's on, let's see what page, there's, it's page three of 11 of their contract. 92 on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm there.
You got there?
Yeah.
Anyhow, I'm thinking anytime you're working with round or replacing these pipes, we're going to be in close proximity to water and sewer, and I don't, I'm thinking, it made me stop and think, that don't pass the responsibility off to somebody else. The designer needs to be proactive in knowing more about where the location of water and sewer utilities are, but does that provision on assumptions, does that cause you any heartburn?
No, the main thing we've got to do is we've got to get the water and sewer identified by the city of Raleigh, they'll mark the utilities, and we'll get those locations. Once the designer has put together the full survey, they'll identify any locations where we have concerns with conflicts with the storm drainage improvements, and we've got a task in the agreement that if needed, that we'll do some under test holes to identify those locations so that we ensure that we don't have a conflict, and that's incorporated in the agreement.
Second part, the last of the assumptions, that no additional pipe camera or closed-circuit TV work is included with this proposal. We're thinking at the end of, probably don't need any camera work for design. Is there any consideration that we need to go back in TV sewer lines after construction is completed to see that all of the activity and heavy equipment, et cetera, whatever's been going on, has not created a leak in sewer lines? Or would Raleigh would just do that as a normal part of their inspection?
And so, you're referring to sanitary sewer, not storm sewer?
Sanitary sewer, yes.
Yeah, with the city of Raleigh, we should be able to get them to camera the lines if needed.
I think that ought to be an item, it doesn't necessarily have to go in here, but I think that's something from a precautionary standpoint, I suspect they would want to do that. I'd encourage them.
In everybody's best interest.
And what was, and I know you're just getting in on this, but what was the estimated construction, what project cost here?
The total budget that included all four projects, as well as the design, was around $1.3 million. Obviously, that's a preliminary estimate prior to full design, but that was the budget.
And the $156 carries it through construction?
$156 carries it through design, and then there are a few tasks in there at the end for construction oversight management, $28,700.
So, their overall fee, if you took the $156 out of the $1.3?
Correct.
Well, it's probably about a 15%, 16% design fee, or engineering fee?
Correct.
That's reasonable in today's market.
Yeah, the original estimate was $150,000 by staff.
Mayor, are you through, Mr. Kennedy?
You go ahead.
Well, I was just going to move that we award the 2018 stormwater project design and authorize town manager to execute contract to McAdams.
Motion's second, further discussion. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, Chris, you're still up.
Thank you. So, this second item that we've got, pavement design revisions, this presentation, we gave this the same presentation a week or so back to the Public Works Committee, and this very much dovetails into the same type of discussions that we've had previously regarding the town's efforts in getting a pavement management system in place to make sure that our streets and street infrastructure that's being built stays in quality condition. So, one of the things that we took a look at in that same background was to look at what we can do to make sure that the city streets that we're getting from new development are starting out as good as we can get. So, the agenda we've got today is to give you a quick background, go through some of the existing details that we've got for local and collector's streets, talk about some common paving issues that we've seen around town, and then we'll talk a little bit more about the pavement design analysis that we took a look at with our standard street details, and provide some recommendations for town council's approval. So, the last time the standard details were approved or revised was back in 2004, and currently, the town only has two street details. One would be for a local street, and one for a collector's street, and this town also has differences in pavement design if it's under normal traffic or under what we consider industrial-use traffic, which would be the heavier trucks. Currently, we do not have details for greenways, or for residential alleys, or major and minor Thor Fairs, which typically fall under NC DOT's jurisdiction for maintenance. This is just a quick shot of one of the existing details for the local street. As you can see, we've got an inch and a half of surface asphalt, over eight inches of stone, and then we've got a slightly thicker mix for industrial use under the same typical section, and then we've got a collector's street typical section with two inches of surface asphalt and eight inches of stone, and again, a heavier duty pavement thickness for industrial use. Another thing I've noticed, kind of circled here on the screen, right here, is the fact that currently, the town does not require any kind of stone underneath proposed curb and gutter, and that's another part of the conversation that we'll have later in the presentation. So, actually, it's right now. So, the curb and gutter detail, really, this is standard curb and gutter, there's nothing special about this detail, it was really just to kind of point out that we do not currently show any stone under the curb. Here's a couple pictures that we've taken, staff's taken, from some areas around town, some subdivisions that have been in place for years. When you don't have any kind of stone underneath the curb, and you've got vehicular traffic taking turns hitting the curb, you can get settlement, and obviously, that can lead to stormwater getting trapped into the curb, ponding, burb baths can then lead to water infiltration down into the pavement, which can, over the long term, start to sacrifice the integrity of the street. This is another example, that same type of situation. I'm sure this was not the way that the street was built when it was first constructed, but over time, it's just had some sag in that curb and gutter, and it's causing these types of drainage issues. Here's another picture, similar situation, at another location. So, this is what we're going to be proposing, along with some of the other recommendations, is to put in a minimum of four inches of stone underneath curb and gutter as it's constructed, and this is pretty much standard, most municipalities in DOT are doing similar construction methods, and we'll show those in the table slide later. Talk a little bit about pavement repair, just kind of some poor practices, best practices. These are not from the town, it's just pictures I took off the internet at different locations, but we don't want to see pavement patches done that have irregular shapes, that are not compacted properly. Eventually, you can turn, it can turn into a situation like this, where, again, it's allowing water to get into the subgrade, which can cause structural stability. This is more of a situation you'd want to see, nice, straight edges, very clear, and very clean. Today, we have a couple details, basically, just two inches of asphalt over 10 inches of stone, or six inches of what they call asphalt base, instead of, if you're using asphalt instead of stone, still kind of a thin patch comparatively. So, this is where the staff went through and took a look at our pavement designs. We looked at new street construction, we took a look at these asphalt patch details, and we also took a look at the curb and gutter foundation. And so, this is what was provided in your backup, and I'll try to walk you through this, as well as the people at home, I know it's a busy slide and a lot of data, but moving from, we've got all the municipalities kind of around Wake County, including Raleigh and all the other municipalities where we could find the data online, and starting at the left side and moving to your right, you're basically looking at your multi-use paths, which I consider sort of like a greenway style, moving to the right towards local streets, then into collector's streets, and then to Thor Fairs. So, the volumes for traffic are increasing as you move left to right, and it just kind of shows you the typical section and pavement designs that all the municipalities are using for these streets. If it shows that not applicable, it just means that either the town or one of the other jurisdictions doesn't have a detail for that specific cross-section right now. And as you can see, Garner, we have, we do not have the multi-use path, alley, and Thor Fair details. So, the recommendation that we've got in this slide is the same as the prior slide, but across the top, we've got today's current pavement designs, and then the recommended changes to those pavement designs by staff, and most of these designs, or all of these designs, are pretty much in line in the middle, they're not the thickest pavement designs- not, they're not the, the thickest pavement designs compared to other municipalities, they're not the thinnest pavement designs. Uh, they're kinda right there in the middle, uh, very comparable. Uh, the last line there is really just as a, sort of a benchmark, kinda give you an idea, uh, the strength as you move from the left side to the right side, if you were to, 'cause a lot of these are, are mixed between asphalt and stone. Um, an inch of asphalt is, is about equal to three inches of stone. So, what I just did at the bottom was to kinda show if you had, uh, changed that from a asphalt and stone combination to a full-depth asphalt, that's about how thick the asphalt would be for each section, uh, as we've recommended, and as you can tell, as you move from left to right, those just continue to increase as you have more traffic and more industrial uses. Uh, as far as the last two columns, uh, again, we, we've moved towards a recommendation of four inches of stone under the curb and gutter, which is again in line with, um, all the unit, other municipalities, it's right in between three and five inches elsewhere. And then our pavement patch, the last column is moving from before of a two-inch asphalt and 10 inches of stone to a two inches of, of, uh, asphalt surface and seven inches of binder, uh, asphalt. So, it's sort of a full-depth asphalt. Um, one last thing I would note is the Thor Fair Minor and Major, those pavement designs is pretty much the same that DOT uses throughout Wake County, um, so, we're not, we're, we're just sort of putting into details that, uh, match up with what we're used to seeing from NCDOT. Obviously, any, any, uh, increase that DOT may require, uh, for any widening plans for extenuating circumstances would just supersede the town's details. So, next steps, uh, staff is, uh, looking to update these pavement designs as recommended. Uh, we would go forward with adding the do, details that we're missing for, uh, greenways, uh, alleys, and Thor Fares, and, uh, we were planning to recommend approval of, of these pavement designs to take effect on any plans that are approved on or after May 1st, and then later in the year, uh, staff's gonna be taking a more comprehensive look at, at all of our standard details, uh, such as roadway, bike ped, transit, stormwater, and I know that Planning's also got an initiative with, uh, updating the UDO, so, our plan is to try to look through a lot of these details and make sure that we're all in sync with what we're doing, uh, through planning, so that by the end of the year, hopefully we can have a more comprehensive update. But we felt like with the, uh, pavement management, uh, items that we've got going on, it was better to go ahead and get, get these out immediately. Glad to answer any questions.
Yes, uh, Chris, we, during the, uh, Public Works Me, Committee meeting, one of the questions that we raised, that it just reminded me of, uh, although these, these standards would go into effect May 1st, we've got some projects that are in the queue, how would these design standards affect projects that are already under review?
We would begin rolling these, the, this out with review comments immediately, should this be, uh, passed today, and so, unless a project has already been approved, uh, prior to May 1st, then it would get incorporated with these changes. And one thing I would mention, um, especially with respect to, uh, local streets, uh, which is the majority of our plans that come through the door, uh, under the past, uh, under Tony Chalk, a lot of the projects that were getting constructed were already, were still installing more than the standard minimum detail, and the reason for that is because most contractors and developers wanna be able to leave the asphalt down a little bit, uh, to, to allow construction traffic while the initial homes are starting, and the only way to do that, since an inch and a half was our standard, you can't do that in two lifts. So, you, so what they had to do in order to, to be able to put down two lifts of asphalt is they had to put it down a little thicker. So, most of the projects that we're seeing are actually getting constructed a little bit higher than the minimum was anyway. This is just sort of solidifying it.
And, uh, if it's in the queue and was gonna be approved after May 1st, then they would, they would definitely have to conform to the, uh, new standards if it's approved prior to May 1st, it's, it's according to the existing standards.
Yes, sir.
We were, uh, uh, very much, uh, in concurrence with making these updates in the design standards, uh, it was, uh, it, it will serve us well, it's not a tremendous, a half, an extra half inch of asphalt on a, on a, just a regular street doesn't sound like a lot, and, uh, an extra little bit of stone doesn't sound like a lot, but it will, it will enhance street integrity for years to come, and, uh, I'm, we appreciate the work that, that's been done previously to get this initiated through Tony and, uh, and then with Chris coming along and getting this, uh, getting this to us, this is, uh, much needed, and, uh, hope every, hope everybody's in agreement on that.
I have one curiosity question, probably sound a little silly, but when you showed the, uh, picture earlier of the, of the curb where the water accumulated there, um, and so we don't, we haven't had the, I guess, the stone under that previously, the proposal was to do that, I was wondering how much of that may just be where the motoring public occasionally shortcuts there a little bit and runs up on the curbing and, uh...
Well, I'm sure that has a lot to do with it. I, I think part of the problem is, is, is not having a, if, if it's got a stone foundation, it'll just help delay the impacts of that, but yeah, that's absolutely a possibility and a likelihood that, that's from vehicular traffic jumping the curb.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
I certainly favor, uh, the, I think the recommendation that these are reading new standards, starting May 1, I believe you said?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes, I'll go ahead and make a motion to that, that we, uh, move forward to adopt these standards effective May 1st, that were presented by town engineer and recommended, recommended also by the Public Works Committee at our meeting, which was on March the 6th.
Second.
Motion's made in second, further discussion, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
So, the last item that I've got for you is related to the capital project status report. Um, this is a initiative that staff's developed to try to provide, uh, council, uh, internal and external stakeholders information about the status of, uh, capital projects, uh, throughout the department. Um, I know that the backup that you've probably got is probably difficult to read, is that, I know it's a very large spreadsheet, so I'm trying to blow it up on the screen the best I can, um, and I'll just sort of walk you through it real quick and, and answer any questions you got, but the way we've set it up is to have, uh, capital street projects, um, capital sidewalk projects, we've got utility projects, uh, town facilities, uh, and then other projects that are sort of miscellaneous, that don't fall under those major categories that are the bulk of our projects, and then we've also got, uh, NCDOT's projects. We went through and took a look at both all of the STIP projects that we have within the town of Garner, as well as, uh, NCDOT's maintenance projects, which are mostly their resurfacing projects, 'cause we do get a lot of, of calls and inquiries for, uh, DOT projects that citizens may think are the town of Garner, uh, initiated. So, it, what we've got, um, to provide is, going back to the top, is just the project name, um, an idea, the description from two, a description that explains exactly what the project can, uh, entails, project length, the percent complete, whether or not this is a design project, uh, or a construction project, or possibly a, a design study, um, public meeting dates, if that's applicable, uh, and then just sort of the schedule for, uh, right-of-way, an advertisement, contract award, uh, we've got a, a line for budgets, and then, uh, also for funding sources, uh, and then we've got contact information both for the town, uh, or DOT contact, as well as the consultant or contractor that's working on the project. And so, the main, main thing is just, just a spreadsheet status report that, that, um, I've used at, at past employers, and it's been very helpful for both, uh, council members, it's very helpful for stakeholders such as utility companies, PSNC, AT&amp;T, Duke Energy, who work with the town. Uh, obviously, we coordinate a lot with them on our projects and need their assistance, and this kinda gives them a, a look ahead as to what we've got coming down the pipe, and it also can, can be put out there for, uh, public, uh, interaction as well on the website, uh, so it might help people answer a question if they come to the website, they're able to find that information, uh, without having to try to contact somebody, and even better, they might have actual, uh, a project contact directly with the town, that they can get their phone number and call them and ask a question. So, just something that we're gonna start rolling out, we're looking to update this, uh, on a quarterly basis, um, so that you can see how the projects are moving ahead, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Questions, comments? I like it, it's very detailed and gives a lot of information.
Yes, I like it, though, also, Chris, I sent an email to staff in a couple weeks, three, four weeks ago, and had inquired specifically about the three, uh, sidewalk projects that we knew that were under some, some design, part of, that had been designed, Mr. Anderson has been working with staff, about acquiring, uh, any right-of-way or easements to build the three sidewalks that are, uh, in line, one is the Vandoor Springs Spring Drive Sidewalk, which is hopefully to advertise for bids sometime this spring, and award a contract sometime in the summer, and hopefully able to be constructed this year, we hope.
Mm-hmm.
The other is the Vandoor Springs, the one from the, uh, fire station, Department Station Number 3, and down to Tiffany Circle, I know we're still waiting, there's a Clomar study involved with that, that we have to wait on for the, uh, the study of, uh, because of the, uh, stream, and that also says they may get started construction this year. And the third is the grant we have, which are the timber drive connectors on the, uh, south side, there near Stow Place, uh, that area from Blanton Street down to Stow Place, and then also as you cross over Avosboro from, uh, where's on the other?
Harth Drive.
Thank you, yes, Harth Drive, on up to connect to the, uh, shopping center, and disappointing, let's see, that's gonna be late, late in 2020, but anyway, I think we could go out there with a shovel and some bags of concrete and work on that one, but anyway, at least part of it. Uh, but I know that's a grant, and it takes time, so, uh, you guys, I appreciate all the detail, I know you, you updated these DNC DOT maintenance projects, where like, as you said, Chris, was a lot of asphalt overlay, and some of those have been completed, I know Western Road got done last year, which, uh, was sorely needed here for many years, so it got done ahead of schedule, and, uh, there's a lot of detail on here. I take my glasses off so I can read it good, but there's a lot of detail on here, and I appreciate this, uh, this information, I believe you said, but this will be updated quarterly, correctly?
Yes, sir.
We get updates for staff quarterly, so this is really, uh, uh, really good information.
It's just, uh, looking under town facility projects, the underground utilities here at Town Hall, is that, uh, talking about it being done in the summer of 2019, does it look like that's, actually, we may get around to doing it then?
Yes, sir, they've actually already started, uh, Duke started, they've set a pole, uh, week or so back, and they are getting ready to mobilize, uh, to start, uh, taking their, running their new lines underground, and then once they've got those energized, they'll start taking their lines off the old poles. We're also working with, uh, Charter, because Charter also has some lines on the poles that need to come off, so we're working through that agreement as well.
I've, uh, I know you were not here when this one started, and it's been in limbo for a while, but that, uh, White Oak Sewer Project from the Camelot Subdivision under utility projects, I think it had been designed and on the shelf for a year and a half, waiting on Corps of Engineers, is that, am I?
It's, we're in the, we're in the final stages of permitting right now, we've actually got that project ready for bid, so we're hoping to get that out very soon.
Was, was that, was the delay really part of the engineer, was it, was the, was the Corps of Engineers just waiting for them to get around to finishing their review?
Uh, I don't know the, all the backstory, but I know it's, it's not been just one agency, it's been, um, both the city of Raleigh and the Corps, um, and, uh, land quality as well, they've just, a lot of them have provided comments, their comments have been addressed, and the consultant is just waiting the letter of approval. So, um, we're, we're gonna, we're, we've been told that they're pretty comfortable with the plans, where they're at, and they're just waiting on the permits to come in, so that's why we're, we're finalizing the bid docs to go out for advertisement.
So, have we lost anything, but have, have we, uh, lost a client or anything but due to this delay? Or are we still in good shape?
Um, no, sir, I don't, I don't believe we lost a client, so to speak, however, I think, um, everyone is anxious to, uh, to get started.
Yes, we are.
Um, a, a, and just so you know, it is, it is almost, uh, it is very difficult to, to finance a project whenever you do not have, uh, the appropriate utilities, um, in place to do so, banks just won't, or, or private institution, lending institutions will not, um, put the money up. So, that, that's kinda where we're at, and, um, everyone's just, uh, waiting.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Chris, a specific question, if you have any additional information on the new Bethel Truck Road Bridge replacement, which we've been talking about for several years. It says the contract was awarded last July, and the completion date is April 29th of 2020, which is, uh, 13 months from now.
Yeah, we're, we're getting a lot of inquiries on that one, and I, I actually, just before the meeting, had, had emailed DOT to check status on that. They've awarded the contract, they've got a contractor, and for whatever reason, they just haven't started construction, so I, I'm not exactly sure what the reasoning for that is, but I should have an answer on that, hopefully tomorrow, and I can certainly let you know.
Yeah, I mean, they were talking about having that completed before the high school opened, South Garner High School opened, so...
And then I would also mention, uh, forgot, mentioned earlier, that the resurfacing contract has also been advertised, so that's out for bids right now, and bid opening is in early April.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Good.
John, I think John had something to...
I just wanted to add that the, the printed copy at your seat tonight has a few minor corrections compared to the one you received electronically in the packet, so once we, after tonight, we will send out a separate document to you, if you care to have it, that's just a PDF, uh, so that you could use it electronically, that will match what you got at your desk tonight, but the one on your desk tonight is updated from the one that was in your packet.
Very good. Okay, we're going to committee reports, all at work.
Chris gave the guts of the Public Works Committee action, anything else to add, Gray?
Uh, we also discussed, uh, the pavement maintenance, uh, uh, report that we've gotten earlier about, and we'll discuss it in the budget, about how to plan future amounts of money to fund pavement maintenance, and that was, because of that report, it was so important to adopt those new pavement design standards, because, uh, with how much money that we're gonna need over the year of the, the next, well, for a long, long time, to maintain our streets to the standards that we have set, the score, which is 76.2, something in that neighborhood, it's gonna cost money, so that's why it's important to get those standards in here so quick, and I appreciate y'all supporting that, and staff's work on that.
And Mr. Manager?
Our, under manager reports, you have your standard reports in your packet, uh, the Garner Info, a finance report, and a building and permit report. Uh, in addition to that, I wanna mention that, uh, the employee pancake breakfast is Friday, uh, from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., uh, at the senior center, so we appreciate...
You reminded me of that.
Council, uh, providing that and cooking for us. Uh, the other item is, you may have been notified or seen some information about the Raleigh water supply being, uh, increased due to them, due to, um, them, them being able to, uh, draw water from the storage section of the, uh, water pool at Falls Lake, and that should take care of, uh, water supply for the area until 2047, I believe, the report says. And the last thing is, public work is going through its reaccreditation, and they had a site visit today, and, uh, they'll wrap up tomorrow with the site visitors, uh, the assessors, and there'll be a report, a final wrap-up report here at Town Hall at 9:30, and councils, um, welcome to join that, that, uh, conversation and, uh, listen to that report.
You say that's tomorrow?
Tomorrow morning, yes, 9:30, in the, uh, training room.
Mr. Mayor, um, I know you're gonna give me a chance to report, but I just wanted to comment to my fellow councilmen, relating to the pancake breakfast, um, I, I was trying to remember when we usually are able to wrap that up, I, I certainly will be there, even though I need to get away to a 9:30 volunteer, sort of obligation I have at a, able to serve there, so I was trying to remember if we're finished, with cleanup and everything.
They pushed us out, by the way.
Okay, yeah, all right.
It sounds like you must be, wanna do the dish duty and get all the dishes cleaned up in time.
Well, go ahead with your board. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead with your board.
Oh, okay, um, yes, I, I would just like to, uh, note and ignore, and I realize I, I may miss some people that have done some wonderful things, but, uh, over the course of the last few days, uh, I believe it's Mr. Twitty who gets very much, uh, credit for, uh, the, uh, putting together the Hero's Breakfast that was, uh, put on, and, uh, many of us had a chance to attend that, to recognize, uh, law enforcement, first responders, I thought that was well done and a good program, and, uh...
And also would like to, to make note of one of our local businessmen here, Bill Morris, who apparently has an annual event, and I was able to attend it this year, along with the mayor and others, where he makes significant contributions to charitable organizations as a result of the profits from his company and his, his theory on tithing those or giving 10%. That was a very inspirational kind of a meeting, and I learned of some charitable organizations that I really didn't even know about that existed here in Garner area. So a shout-out to Mr. Morris for his generosity. Thank you. Kathy?
Yes, sir. I have been asked by the Garner Women's Club to get contact information for the current Ms. North Carolina. They would like to have her come and speak, and I did not have that in mind.
Yes, it's got to be.
And another question regarding our ETJ along Old Stage Road. Someone called me and tell me that she lived in a neighborhood out there, called Town Hall to get some information, and was told they are not. What are our boundaries of ETJ along Old Stage Road? Do you go all the way out to 1010?
It varies. It's not like a solid line down the road, so it skips some parcels and includes others. So I know, you know, like Eagle Ridge, of course, is in, but some of the properties across the street from Eagle Ridge are not in the ETJ. So I, I'd have to know the address exactly to let you know, because it's, it's not a perfect street square, or whatever.
That's all I have, sir.
Go ahead.
Thanks, staff, again, for this Capitol Projects list. Again, I get asked about the sidewalks quite a bit, so I'm glad we're able to see a schedule that hopefully the two, two of the three sidewalk projects we have under design right now are moving forward. The Spring Drive, the Vandor Springs, Springs Sidewalk, which will also have some minor road improvements along Vandor Springs Road, and then also the sidewalk project for Vandor Springs Road from Timber Drive down to Tiffany Circle on the east side? South side? South side, east side? The side where it goes into Tiffany Circle.
South, yeah.
South side. So I appreciate that update. Also appreciate staff with the brief update about the plan improvements and design, and also the work on the other part of Jones Office Road, because I get, people ask, you know, again, they're going to ask us again, this, once, you know, this project is completed sometime in September, according to Mr. Martin, we know we can do the rest of Jones Office Road. So it's good to know that that's in process, and we're getting, you say we're going to talk about that at our meeting next week, some more specifics, correct, at our work session? Okay. So just to let people know, because I think, I'm not the only one to get, gets asked that question. That and when's the rec center going to open? And I, I can be a little salty about that, so I'll just be quiet and let Mr. Kennedy have it, he can be salty about it too.
What was that, Kathy?
Kathy needed to make a connection.
Who is it?
Well, you're Mr. Marshman, a little nicer than me, Mr. Kennedy.
At least you guys don't have to see it every day, two or three times a day.
Well, I drive by it most of the time so I can see it and see what's going on.
See what's not going on.
Well, you should have not made.
My turn.
And on, I would just say, on that note, real quick, we did provide a tour for, you know, a couple of council members that were in town, so if the others that were not available, if you want to go in and see some of the progress from the inside out, just let us know.
I'll give you an update in about two minutes on that. The, I was, I was pleased to hear that efforts were underway on the RFP process for the pad at the rec center. I would encourage you, John, to push that. It is a first-time item that the town is doing. I don't know that the town has done one of these before, and, and I was a little surprised at the Downtown Garner Association taking the lead, because I'm sure they've never done this before. And that's going to be, it's going to be a challenge to, to move it and evaluate, and so I'd, it'll take all, take a lot of hands on deck to make, make that come out as a success, but I'm glad it's, it's happening and, and, and I, I wish we were further along on it, but, but I, it's, we're likely, it'll surprise me if we can get it out this year, because we're dependent upon the school of government, and you've got volunteer organizations, it's, makes for slow progress, but I hope it moves along. Got a question, though, about downtown. I understand that Josh Whitaker's downtown restaurant and bar application was originally planned for the Planning Board agenda last night, but didn't, was pulled from it. Anybody got any?
There was just an oversight in getting it on the right calendar, and so they've talked to him, and, and we don't think that's going to hold anything up on his work. So that was a, just an error on scheduling.
Yes, I was going to report on the fact that we did, Ken and I were able to go with, with staff, and we toured the rec center recently. I think at that time, Kathy, they, they had no more than five people on the job, and three, two or three of those were smoothing concrete. I, I think the most polite thing I could say is, there's quite a ways to go. And, and I think the last report we had was June, and towards the end of June completion?
Yeah, what, I reported that, but what was official, and still official until tomorrow, was they were still saying the end of this month for the building, and then the road improvements would be following that, at least by a month or so. So I think we'll get an update tomorrow, and we can get that out to you.
Does it really look like the building?
It does not.
No way, no way.
Yeah, realistically, it does not. Did you have any other information to provide for that?
No, we have, we do have our construction meeting tomorrow. We're working through an awful lot of details right now.
Do they ever offer any rationale as to why it's continually put off and continually put off?
Working through an awful lot of details right now. It's very true.
Last item is, could we discuss for a minute, see the logistics for Friday morning? It, it will be, I, I wind up with, got a church meeting at 6:00 or 6:15, and I hadn't thought about getting things done ahead of time that night, but we're going to need to do some cooking ahead of time, are we not?
Count clerk shaking her head no.
No, I think they streamline the process, so you don't have to do that.
We certainly did.
What does have to be done?
He's just been six. He's just been six a.m.
Yeah, streamlined.
Just follow, follow Stella's direction.
Still got to be there and crack, gross eggs.
You can come earlier if you'd like.
Have we accepted?
We last year, 12 dozen, and gross.
Have we accepted applications and evaluated prospects for to take over Mr. John's job of cooking pancakes?
Not me.
I think I have, I'm not worried about it, Mr. Kennedy.
I'm glad to give up the sink, be glad to do that. I've cooked for, if I can satisfy my grandchildren, I can probably...
You mean we're going to have some Mickey Mouse pancakes? Hard to do that.
I probably have a problem turning on the stove.
And the interviews are here Wednesday, tomorrow?
Tomorrow, correct. Tomorrow afternoon, training room, starting at 1:30. The interviews start at 1:30. The council, we advertise, will meet starting at 1:00, in case you have any logistics to complete before the interviews start.
Okay, anybody got anything? Bill, do you have anything?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor, vote by say and aye.
Aye.
Aye.